All right, welcome. Stay the pledge allegiance. Call me or say pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the blood of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all. All right, welcome. Do you want me to mail that? Um, she said I could just email it, so I don't, we don't need to mail it. I'll just email it to me and I'll email it to who she gave me the email address for.
Hey, Louisa? Louisa?
Louisa?
Oh, you're here. Um, do we have a PBC meeting this month then?
Yes.
Uh, what day is that? The 19th? No, when? Yeah, 19th.
Hi, Benzy. Good morning.
Okay, thanks.
All right, you got it. Hi, Benzy. Good morning, how are you?
Hey.
Good morning, Alex? No.
I just got the phone moments.
I know. I did too. Um, do you want to start with review and updates?
Yeah, I don't have much other than, I know you were there too, but I thought the old Trooper event on Monday was well attended and was really good. And I think that, you know, sometimes we don't realize the talent that we have with our young people when the J.C. Crowell or Tennessee High School Crowell, um, they were good, really good.
They were very good, yes.
Um, they were way better than the soldiers that got up and sang.
Yeah.
But, you know, in all seriousness, it's a good event. I'm glad they do that. And then, um, the other event was last night for volunteer farm and pro firefighters. Um, and that was really nice. Um, and they, they ordered them all, uh, black and gray polos and...
I saw the picture, it looked really good.
Oh my gosh. That, they looked really sharp and nice. And they gave them a lot of nice little door prizes to people and, um, so yeah, that was about it. But, uh, you know, the one thing I forgot to mention in all mega public is that, um, I was thanking the volunteers, but we don't realize the families behind them.
Yeah.
And I forgot to mention that because there's a lot of young people there and I know it takes away from the families, so kudos to, to the families that backed them up. So, that's it.
Yeah, I agree. Um, yeah, I, I enjoyed the, the old Trooper dinner and, um, uh, enjoyed meeting some of the new people that are here and I really, really like, uh, General Brown. He is a dynamic speaker. I told him, I said, all right, if you have a long, come on in there and work for you. Um, yeah, I, I enjoyed that. Um, then I attended KAC, um, English, Tawkesbury, Kansas Association of Counties Conference and myself and Jeremy from Public Works and Crystal, um, HR were there. And, um, yeah, I actually was probably the, the best one that I've been to so far with speakers. We had very good speakers, motivational speakers. Um, Coach in the Cowboy, um, was the coach of Derby High School that took them from zero to nine to state champions and, um, uh, just talked about culture and how, you know, leaders, department heads, you know, they're the ones that set the culture for the, for the county or the organization and, um, and how important it is to get everybody on board with that. Um, so yeah, I think that is, I mean, I would love for them to come talk at one of our meetings. I think that would be, um, a really good, uh, and then we had a guy, um, just talk about different, come and talk the next day. Um, I can't remember his name. I was, and, but anyway, he, um, he actually has spoken, um, to the local municipalities and the school district in Kansas and now he did the county. So obviously he's in high demand. He's from Arizona, um, just motivational, talking about how to get people involved and, um, uh, different things on, um, uh, getting the peop, the public to be more involved in the government and getting, um, the information out there. And, you know, some of the counties talked about how they've done, um, you know, town halls, uh, others, uh, you know, have meetings that are at night, you know, once a month. And, and I, I actually think that's something we should look at because I know it's kind of hard for people to get into, um, our meetings. And I definitely want to continue the budget hearing in the evening because I, I was pleasantly pleased how many people showed up for that. Um, you know, just so we're, you know, trying to get people involved and letting them understand. And that was one of the frustrations was, you know, people don't understand sometimes how the government works and how, even though the county's sending you that tax bill, that's not all for the county. And, um, you know, and so people, you know, getting that information out and, and, uh, you know, possibly doing stuff with the city and at town halls with several of the commissioners and, and board members from the school district, um, to just, you know, vet some, some questions and explain to them on how things are. Um, but yeah, it was a, it was a really good, um, uh, conference. Um, I do think that we do, and I need to put this on the agenda, but, um, you know, talking about, uh, the alternate, um, energy sources and getting policies for that. They talked about AI policies. We're going to look into that. Salina already has an AI policy on, on guidelines on what, what can be used, um, for that. And so I, I, I just think it's a, um, thing we need to be aware of and take care of. Um, went to the General's Christmas cocktail party, um, on Saturday and that was a lot of fun. Well, attended on the section I came to, um, by people from, um, St. Peter County. It was the last section because they do it in sections because there's so many people so they can actually talk and, and, um, have some one-on-one time. But yeah, it was really good. And then after that, we attended the hometown Christmas, went to the Christmas market. Um, the weather was absolutely gorgeous. There were people everywhere. Um, the line for the carriage rides, um, was, uh, was huge. So I think a lot of the kids really wanted to do that. Um, I, I'm glad that they get to do that every year. But yeah, the energy downtown and, and I know it was because the weather was so nice. There was just people walking everywhere and, and, um, so yeah, shout out to everybody. I know there were so many organizations. Main Street started it, but there was, uh, you know, the, the Arts Council, the Opera House, the, um, the market, the Main Street Market. Everybody was involved in that. The Bartel House had, had a, um, event in there, you know, having kids come in there and do it. And that was really busy when we walked by. So, so yeah, it was a really good time and I, I, people don't realize how much time and energy it takes to do things like that. And I really appreciate all those who stepped up and all the volunteers that worked that day, um, because it is a really cool event. Oh yeah, they had a, a live nativity scene with a little donkey and a baby and yeah, it was really good.
Turned above our contact, I mean, with them for animals.
Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, it was really cool. I appreciate that.
Well, I, I would, I'd RSVP for the General's event, but something came up and, and so I would regretfully tell them to come.
Was your time a critical? Yeah, it was good. It was nice. And it was nice the weather there too because they had the pre, uh, like check-in outside. So it was nice to be able to stand out there and talk to people.
But it was inside, inside the quarters, right?
Yeah, after, I mean, everybody was outside and then they, um, had everybody walk in one by one to greet the General and his wife. And, um, and then they had a really nice spread and, um, they had the Michigan game on, so a lot of people were paying attention to that, so.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, it was fun.
It's always a, you know, it's a spectacular event.
Yeah, it is. I think we're very lucky with the command staff we have here in Raleigh. Um, we've been lucky the last few years, so I mean, I think it's, uh, a good partnership.
Well, and I hear we got a new study manager.
Yep. Yep. I think he, um, will bring some good, um, uh, energy. Uh, he's been in, you know, having the military background and also the study manager experience. I think that's very well rounded in our community and, and a great fit. So hopefully, uh, that will...
I wonder whether it would be best to invite him to a meeting sometime.
Oh yeah, sure. For sure.
I mean, I, I know...
I don't want to overwhelm him first.
No, no. I'm thinking, um, after the first year, like, acclimate.
Yeah. All right, Crystal?
Good morning, Crystal Mount, Jones, HR Director. Um, I was going to update on KAC, but I listened and it sounds like Trish did a pretty good job of doing that.
You were way more involved than I was with being on the board, so.
Yes, well, as far as the, um, speakers and things like that, um, we did have a really good turnout. Over five, 400 people, uh, showed up for it and it was really good. It will be in Wichita again next year. I don't remember the date, um, but at least, and next year will be the 50th anniversary for the KAC.
Yeah.
So that will be the president. I will be president, at least in this unofficial till next month, but yes, I should be the president, yeah. Um, so I am looking forward to doing that. And they will have the, um, changing of the guard, so to speak, um, on the county day, January, I think it's the 29th. Um, and that's where in the morning we'll have our board meeting. LK, LKM will be there for theirs as well. In the afternoon, the KAC and LKM get together and go over to the State House and, uh, listen to speakers over there.
Yeah.
So is that being you, you're going to have more out of office, uh?
Potentially. I mean, at least we have a, um, board meeting once a month, but sometimes those are by Zoom. So if, if, um, they're not in person, then I just come to work and then we'll participate via Zoom. But until it gets time for some of the, um, committee meetings, um, if I'm invited to participate in some of those. And in September, the president gets to host the board meeting that month. So in September of 2025, I will be inviting the KAC board somewhere here in, uh, Junction City for us to host and provide them lunch and everything while we do that. So I tended to believe, I'm thinking the Opera House. I don't know for sure yet, but, um, I think that might be...
How many people are usually there?
Um, anywhere from 10 to 15 are there and then we'll have others, um, that aren't, I mean, it's an open meeting just like yours are. So we'll have the Zoom set up for anyone that wants to listen to what we're saying or provide public comment for that.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
So, um, this Wednesday is our last employee task force meeting of the year. Um, Keith, I believe you're up. Will you be there? Okay. Um, I will get the agenda ready today and sent out and I'll make sure all the commissioners are on there, but I just want to make sure I knew which commissioners to expect. Also on Wednesday, we are having an employee morale day here in the building. Uh, we've had people sign up to bring snacks or drinks. We'll have everything set up in the conference room. Um, just an opportunity for, everybody's busy this time of year, um, so just a chance for everybody to come in, get some snacks and, uh, visit for a little bit and maybe take some stress out of their day a bit. So, and this, um, I want to give shout out to Gabrielle Carroll from the Register of Deeds Office. This was her idea and she's, I said, I think it's great. Can you handle it? And she said, yep. So she's taken the ball and run with it and got everything set up and she'll get everything starting to set up tomorrow afternoon so that we're good to go Wednesday. So shout out to her because I like having people on the task force that don't just give ideas, but say, what can I do to make that come true? Makes my days a lot easier. Um, and that's about it. I will be in the office all this week and next week. Um, just, uh, coming in late on Friday because I have my monthly tri-county meeting with the HR reps from Pot County and Wiley County. And then I do have all the applications that we've received to date for the CBB Director and Public Works Administrator. Have copies ready and available for you. I don't want to bring them in during open session. Um, but I do have them, so if you will stop and see me sometime today or I can bring them in later when I will be in executive session for other reasons. I would request that you review those that are available. Um, let me know, hopefully by Friday, who you think would be willing, uh, worthy of an interview so we can start working on getting those scheduled. I do think that we've got a few good CBB applications and there's at least two good ones for Public Works.
I had somebody reach out to me about, uh, the CBB and I said, by all means, go ahead.
Yeah, good person. A good person, good.
And the last I have is for Trish. I wasn't sure if you got a hard copy from the hotel or not.
I did.
Okay. So just be, I didn't know that was on your card and you just submit.
Yeah.
All right, that's what we thought. We must recognize the last four.
Yeah.
And that's all I have. I will be back in a bit when Rip gets here for his update.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you. You want me to have, uh, Tammy, go ahead and come over?
Yeah, she's ready.
Good morning. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
Tammy Robinson, I'm the Instrutor. Um, just a couple of things. The first thing is the resolution for petty cash. So, um, Betsy had got that prepared, so it's ready for your signature. Um, stated today, so it'll be 12-9-2024. And then it does have, uh, petty cash being approved, petty cash, um, funds, not checking accounts outside, be very clear on that, within the offices. That is for the specific purpose to be able to give money back when the public comes in and pays for specific services or filing fees or licenses, permits, that kind of stuff. So the treasurer has 1,600. Their request is for, um, registered deeds, 200, health department, 100, the attorney's office, 100, sheriff's department, 525, district court has 200, appraiser, $25, and solid waste, 500. Previously, we had 75 for the clerk, but after, um, they discussed it in their office, they didn't feel that they needed cash anymore. You must not be taking cash from anybody.
Would you guys do cards now?
No.
Just checks?
Just a check or cash. I mean, but then we turn into the appraiser's office or the treasurer's office.
Oh, oh, so you know, wouldn't keep it. I see what you're saying. Okay.
And so that's what the resolution is for, requesting and recommending to be approved. So we have one on file because we have not previously, we could not find one previously.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
Is it 12-9-2024?
Mm-hmm.
Second, all fair.
All right.
And I have two hearings to sign so that we can leave one in the clerk's, or we have one in my office as well, so.
Motion carries.
And then just a couple of other things, um, been working on in my office. So annually, the, uh, government sends out a request for census information, even though they don't, they're not doing a census, they still gather basically our audit information. So, um, you don't have to break it up between all the different categories and the entire county. Um, so that takes a little while. Was working on that and got that submitted. Their due date, they were requesting to have it in was by December 10th, which is today and actually tomorrow. And so that's done and out of the way. And then besides that, we've been working on our year-end review on the financials, working with the treasurer's office, making sure we have everything ready as we near year-end so that when we get to the year-end, it's a smooth, seamless process for future audit.
All right. That sounds good.
And that's all I have this morning?
All right.
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, I was thinking...
Oh, what?
Oh yeah, I forgot. Alex did say he had a dentist appointment.
He won.
Had a dentist appointment with a meeting.
Oh yeah, because he said he waited nine months or something for it.
Yeah.
If you could sign, you know, if you could sign this, this is for BJ66 beer license. It's not, we have to send this to the township board and the commissioner.
Oh, oh.
When we do the actual license, it will be on the agenda. Thank you.
Hey, Don. Morning, Keith. How are you?
I'm good. How about yourself?
All right.
Oh yeah.
Pardon?
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't you come in and say good morning or wish you guys Merry Christmas?
Not reasonable, help.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You guys have a good rest of your day.
You too. Um, and enjoy the nice weather.
Get out in bed.
Yeah.
Hope they light next week and we get a stretch of gold, gold, gold.
You never know. You never know. Hey, tell your brother how I take you for me and Merry Christmas to you guys.
Yeah. Have a good one.
All right. Thank you, Don. Shocker.
Mm-hmm.
Hi, Sherri.
Hello.
Can you take a look at this? Make sure. These came on Friday, but I think they're the same thing in both of them. I don't know why they sent two. Just make sure I'm not missing anything. Okay. Thank you.
You can come in whenever.
All right.
All right. So, we have some riding ties for, we have a six-way tie for treasurer of Liberty Township. And a four-way tie for trustee of Liberty Township. So I've cut out the names and I put them into two separate cups. And I'll have you each draw one from each cup.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Alright, so you have.
Yeah, mix it up. I got.
No, I have one.
I thought there's one.
Grab two.
Okay.
He's drawing for four.
He is drawing for trustee. That one?
That.
Okay, so Trish, treasurer of Liberty.
Donnie Hinder.
Okay. Kay?
Richard Carr.
Richard Carr. Okay. Perfect. So I will send out certificates of election to them.
Hey, um, while I got you guys both in here, remember we talked about, um, the packets when people send out? Are we sending it out with the agenda?
Right now, we're sending them out to whoever it's requested.
Okay, just send it to everybody. Because I had people ask, because they.
Oh, yeah.
And so, just so then people, you know, just when you send out the agenda, just send out whatever anybody has for us.
Oh, okay.
I think that'd be the easiest than you guys having to worry about who asked for it.
Yeah, I didn't have anything this time, so.
Oh, you didn't have anything for Tammy?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought she said she's, she's, she put it on the thing, but I didn't know if you guys had put it on the. Because I think, uh, could you put it on, is there a way to put it on the, you know, where we look at the agenda?
Yeah, I've had, I've mentioned to her and Dana, because Dana is usually the one that posts it. I'm figuring out how to do that.
Yeah, I knew there was a way.
That would be easier.
Yeah, okay. Good. And that might be the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, just like.
Instead of having to send it to the people, it sounds.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll just let them know that it's all.
And then anybody can look at it, whether they get, yeah.
Okay. Is that all you got?
Um, yeah, that's all I got. Easy peasy. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
How's the wife feeling?
He's dead. He's sad his girlfriend wasn't there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, shit.
Oh, shit. Yes, it was. Yeah, I watched Yellowstone and I watched the cheese. Yeah, it was pretty, pretty intense. Sad. Because there's only one more. That's, uh, they say season finale, they don't say total finale, and I can't figure out what they're doing.
They probably didn't.
I, I know.
So, all, all three legislators coming next?
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Nate got worse. Nate had the wrong date.
Yeah, wrong year. And you want to be thinking about what you want to do for the meetings on the twenty-third and the thirtieth? Um, I don't know what's coming up, but like right now, all I have for both days is HR, finance, and public comment. So, we'll see what happens between now and closer.
Okay. Um, Dana, I did, and this might be something to put on the agenda for next week and talk about. Uh, I, I think we're the only county that does this for, uh, elected officials have them come to work on that first Monday when the new person's taking over. And we used to do, we used to do, you guys did, from nine to never, from ten to noon, and then had the new person come in and get sworn in. I think we should, I, I personally think we should do something different. I mean, there's no reason for the, the old person to go out, you know, to, to come in.
Is there, that's it, is there a statute or law we do that?
No, because you're, those, you, we're the only ones that, because I asked several, several of them, and.
I can look.
Yeah, you can, can you look, because I know that several of them, um, that I talked to, they're like, what? Because the statute reads that the new commissioner will take office, or the new elected officials will take office on the second Monday.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that the other, um, and I, I think it just makes more sense.
Well, it's just been done that way for years.
I know, I know.
I don't know why, and, I mean, they've appeared or there.
Yeah.
We can do it however you want to do it.
I mean, let's.
It really never has made sense.
What?
No.
Yeah, I know, it never made, I didn't understand it either, so, um, yeah.
And it's kind of awkward.
Especially because we're not, we're not having, we don't do the lunch thing, so it's not like there's.
Yeah, right.
So, um, but yeah, if you want to put on the agenda, so we maybe take action next week.
Okay.
On it, please.
I, I never knew whether that was, I didn't know we were the only one.
I mean, the other elected officials don't do that. Right? I mean, like.
Oh, I don't know, um.
I mean, I don't.
Yeah, I don't. I don't think so.
What? Yeah, I'd never heard of it until, yeah.
So, Betsy, are you ready for Christmas?
No.
Who is?
That rod is smiling.
Not at all. We just got your birthday.
When is your annual ski grip?
Um, I think we're gonna probably leave after Christmas. Guess I better take my fall decorations down. My two little ones are really into decorating.
What?
My two littlest ones are really into decorating. I'd really like to put everything out.
They can come over to my house.
Well, I mean, like, that might not be the way you would like them out. But I.
But you just require it and let them do it.
I just said that I just love everything. Like, I'm not sure you're gonna be able to eat at our dining room table, because it's just so many decorations, because they can reach it, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, they may as well have anything on it.
Oh, that's hilarious.
But we're gonna live with them for a while, because it really.
I got, I hate, I just, Christmas is not my thing, but I'm not a decorator, but I did put up a little tree this year. And then, I bought, years ago, I bought these little, um, candelabra things to put in the windows, and I finally put them up in the windows. So they look really nice in the evening and night.
Festive.
Yes. Yes. So far, the only people, Ryan's the only one that has anything under the tree, so I need to get busy. And then I, it's not from me, it's from my brothers.
Was there a holiday today, like a, a shopping thing, because they had, I went to Walmart yesterday, and they have like, because, you know, where they put their pods, and then they wrap them up and says not for sale until like, and they had all these pods set up that said not for sale until December night at six thirty AM.
Oh, I don't know. I didn't know they were doing stuff like that. I thought they didn't want like the.
Well, so I knew they did that for Black Friday, but I couldn't figure out what today was. It was like, you know, toys and like that.
Huh. No, I, I didn't see any special sales. I'm just, I, I am grateful for the, um, pickup grocery thing. I think I've only been in Walmart two times in the last six months. Yeah. I just don't understand why the big Walmart has a hundred spots for pickup to delivery, like they're gonna be that many people picking up at one time.
Well, you can do it online, too.
Yeah.
Do you do it at Dylan's too? Pickup? I've never done that.
Oh, man, I do it all the time. All the time. And I probably save money, because usually when I'm in there, I'm like, oh, that looks good.
Yeah, yeah.
You feel like produce is good when you do that?
Uh, I've not had, I've only had a couple of bad experiences. Most of the time, they do a really good job of picking out meat and produce, if I do.
That was what I kind of wondered, too.
Yeah, I think they're specially trained to get the best stuff for the pickup stuff for that, um, but I've only had to, I, I think in, I mean, and I've been doing it since they started in COVID. I think I've only like had a complaint two times on produce, so.
Wow.
Yeah. And they, and they refund your money real quick.
How often do you go to the store, Betsy?
With five kids.
A lot, yeah, that's what I figured.
Every six hours?
See, you could like, uh, see, whenever I, you know, because you're on your app, you can just like, if there's something that might run out, I just put it on the, in my shopping cart. And then after like five days, I'm like, oh, okay, it's time for me to go to the grocery store, and then I pick up a ton, and so.
I try to do it like, like once a week, and then I usually kind of run in.
I have to go in between, yeah. Do you ever go to like Sam's? With your family, that, I would think that'd be good.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just don't get over the slime at that much.
Oh, well, yeah.
It kind of depends, like sometimes in the summer, the boys will plant baseball wings over there, and then I go a lot.
Yeah.
Takes like half a day if you go.
Oh, well, yes, it does, yeah.
Good morning.
Hello. We are ready for you, if you're ready.
Sure, I'm ready.
Yeah, come on. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you.
You're welcome.
How are you today?
Good, how are you, sir, today? You want these two?
Sure.
Here you go.
Thank you so much.
Of course. So I can go over the whole thing with you, or I can go to important news, and you tell me.
How about important news?
Important news.
Yeah.
So, if you flip all the way to the very last, well, slide number nineteenth on page number ten, this will give you an idea about what is happening. We've just had our Pawnee's Inspiring Hope and Help. Um, that's our annual event that generated ninety-seven thousand dollars, which is great news, uh, for us. Of course, that money goes to offsetting costs of uncompensated care, and also program supplies, anything that is needed, staff education. It goes to multiple, um, uh, budget line items. So, please mark your calendars that the next IHH Inspiring Hope and Help is October second of twenty-twenty-five. And it will be at the K State Alumni Center again, so, uh, that's where we had it this year. Um, that's where we will have it next year. Um, we have received, um, license from KDAZ for CSU to operate social detox. And what that means, we'll be adding one to two beds, hopefully, in the future, that might expand, you never know, that we will add, uh, one to two beds for social detox. There is a huge need in our community. And in our ten-county area, there isn't a service provider for community, community detox. Um, referrals will become from all kinds of sources, um, term service is about, um, three to seven days. Now, we are in process of operationalizing this. We got the license from, of, for it from KDAZ. We're in process of operationalizing this and coming up with a, with a start date for it. We have not started taking, uh, clients for detox yet. But we will be in the near future. Of course, there are logistics to work through, you know, work and.
Can you explain what, identify what the detox is for, or is it?
Sure. Detox is for individuals who are trying, who are in, um, who have a substance use challenge, or who have an alcohol challenge, and they have gone through an acute level of treatment, meaning they have gone to a medical detox, uh, or a hospital level of care, but they need something that gives them that push in the community. It's not a sober living house type of care, because we do have one of those. Um, but it's a stage in between medical slash hospital and community living on your own. And it's much needed in our community, because there isn't anything like it.
Yeah.
Uh, here. So we're hoping that this will give, um, any incoming referrals, any incoming clients, the ability to safely detox. Of course, the components of, uh, service, of course, would include therapy, um, would include case management. Um, so when someone goes in and they have other social determinants of health, we'll work with them on that. Um, we're also thinking about the different service components, because the state Medicaid manual might say, oh, provide these services to them, which we will, of course, provide, but oftentimes you come across a situation, for example, for CSU, the state does not mandate that we provide medical psychiatry. But you have a population that is in an acute crisis, they have meds, they have prescriptions, they have other needs that need to be provided. So what do you do? You say that the state Medicaid manual does not allow me to provide this, or, or allows me to provide it, but does not pay for it? We go ahead and do it, and that comes at a very significant cost. Because that's good care. That's how we, you know, the, the person does not have, let's say, um, they have prescriptions that have expired, and there isn't a provider that can do a medival, um, outside in the community that would assess them for that, and bridge, we call bridging their prescriptions, because they ran out, and they don't have a new prescription. So we step in and provide that.
So how does that get to referrals, or, I mean, who refers them?
For CSU or detox? CSU, the referrals come from anyone in the community, um, they come from, uh, people who are being discharged from hospitals. They can come from people who, on their own, could come from a family member, it could come from, uh, another social, social service provider, it could come from anyone. For detox, um, it is, um, involuntary, it's not an involuntary, because we can't manage involuntary involuntery to state-level hospitals, but it could come from anywhere, it could come from community corrections. Um, it could come from insurance companies, it could come from an acute care hospital that says, I'm discharging this person. Um, would you take them for a, um, a community level? Um, it's not, we don't provide an inpatient level of care, although our CSU is perceived to be inpatient, but it is actually an outpatient level of care. Um, so we cannot hold people in our units, um, involuntary, for example, because it is an outpatient. And we're not designed for that, but, um, short answer, it comes from all kinds of referral sources. Yeah. Um, any other questions about this? Okay. Um, mobile crisis service is coming to Riley and Park County, so, um, we have been expanding, uh, our whole crisis intervention team. And this, um, continues to grow. When we started, we started for the western region and central regions, this being central region. And, um, we started in Clay Center, um, positioning our team, that's our first team there. And that team is able to travel anywhere, uh, in a two-hour mile radius, um, or no, in a two-hour, yeah, two-hour, not mile, two-hour radius, or commute radius. Um, and they're able to do this in the environment of the individual, could be the library, it could be their home, it could be anywhere. Uh, continues to be, uh, a thing, or I don't wanna call it a challenge, but rather, the state Medicaid level is not designed to have mobile crisis in the hospitals. Uh, which is sad, but would like to see that happening, um.
What about our jail? Would it be?
Yeah, they can. They can, but here's the good news, um, because we're expanding, we're expanding to Riley, we're expanding to Park Counties. We have already affected December first, and you could, as you could imagine, um, with the high rate of uninsured and underinsured individuals, that service is oftentimes not covered. But it is part of the CCBHC design that we strive to, um, perfect, uh, and, um, it is necessary, again, yet another type of service that, in many cases, uncompensated.
Do you have any numbers, um, for how many times they've responded to our area?
I will get those to you next time.
Just curious.
Absolutely. I can even email them to you.
Okay.
Yeah, I will email them to you. Um, let me just write this down. Now, one other piece of good news is that there's a correspondor model coming to Gary County. We're very excited about it. And, um, we are in communication with, uh, Corey Odell, and I know that, um, Justin Stopper will also benefit from it, hopefully, uh, at the jail to, uh, their, their, um, the population serve there as well. Uh, this continues to be, um, a challenge that I see in several areas. There isn't, um, correctional health is not designed for that, which is unfortunate, and we tried to do what we could through models like correspondor, I mean, I, I am very hopeful that this will be fantastic for Gary County. Riley County, it has been very successful, very successful, and we're grateful for the opportunity to work with the community and, and help whenever we can, because it's not only a, a challenge for law enforcement, or, uh, for the correctional health side, but it's also a challenge for everyone in the community, including us as well, so we're happy to do whatever we could. You know, one big milestone that we have reached, uh, through our mental health awareness training grant, uh, for mental health first aid, we've received, and it's been over a year now, um, a considerable grant from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration, federal government, about a couple hundred thousand dollars a year to provide, um, mental health first aid, uh, QPR, question persuade and refer, de-escalation as well. So in the first year, we exceeded, so the first year, given the implementation, startup and all, uh, so actually, first year is less than a year. Um, less than a calendar year, we exceeded a thousand people trained. And, um, that's a big success. Uh, for the first probably quarter of the new year into the grant, we exceeded the number for almost a whole year, because there is a significant need in the community, and.
I'm glad people are recognizing that and reaching out to you to get this, because we did, we had for our, uh, clay training day, and, um, Michelle, we heard nothing but good things about, she did an amazing job.
Oh, she's fantastic. I'm hearing from county commissioners, I mean, Riley County, other counties, reaching out saying, hey, I have attended this, or so-and-so attended this and told me, it's probably one of the best trainings they have ever attended. And it's heartwarming to hear that, because there is a big need.
Sure.
You know, there's a big need, so, um, continues to be very successful, um, and, um, with that said, um, we have entered year two and, and continue to, you know, reap that success, uh, for the community as well. I'll end with that, uh, well, actually, a couple of things. Kaidads came to visit us, uh, along with, um, the Deputy Secretary of Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration. So that was, um, during the time that the, um, that's on September twentieth, when the Association of Community Mental Health Center, Centers had their annual conference. Um, and, um, all twenty-six CMHCs had a representation, representation from different, um, uh, other national, uh, interested entities like SAMSA and, uh, our colleagues from Kaidads. So they came and visited, and of course, this is the CMHC of the, or CCBHC of the area. Um, and we had planned a forty-five to an hour, um, yeah, visit that evolved to be a two-hour visit, because they were very interested in hearing more and learning more. And, um, you know, Tom Kader, who's the, um, First Deputy Assistant, or Deputy's Deputy Assistant Secretary, um, has skin in the game, uh, he himself, uh, because he went through a recovery process himself. Yeah, so that's, um, you, whenever you talk about recovery, he perks up, and that's, that's his passion, you know? Um, but that is that, um, so that was a testimony to the good work that Pawnee does, and how we come together as a team to provide the best care possible, uh, to residents, to the clients who walk into our door. Um, an important thing to remember, uh, holidays are, we're in the holiday season. Um, there's always hope, although the holiday season can be a saddening season for some. Um, there is access, uh, we have same-day access that is available. All people need to do is to walk into any of our sites, even here in Junction City as well, and, uh, ask to be seen for same-day access. Paperwork is completed, uh, we do, we go through an admissions, um, uh, paperwork packet, and they see a therapist for an assessment that day, um, and they're able to access services, um, and, and have a therapist there, their, what becomes their permanent therapist, I don't wanna call them permanent, because we don't want them, you know, receiving, um, we, we want them to be stabilized, that they don't rely on a provider for the rest of their life. We journey with them, but what becomes, or who becomes their therapist is someone, of course, after the assessment process takes place, they're able to do that within seven to ten days to see their therapist. And this is unheard of, because again, I'm gonna toot our horns, because it takes, we know that it takes several weeks, and in some cases, months, um, to see a therapist and access mental health services. Um, crisis services are available. Um, you know, one of the big things that the G routing for nine eight eight has recently, um, changed. And, um, actually, now that we're talking about it, if you go to slide fourteen on page seven, that in twenty twenty, the Congress designated the new nine eight eight dialing code to operate through the existing National Suicide Prevention Lifelines line. And so what used to happen is that G routing, when a call goes through a nine eight eight line, the call goes to a response center, response center, you know, assists the person, tries to de-escalate, and then refers them to the CCBHC of the area. Now, if I am in, if I have, um, a Gary County or Junction City area code, I'm gonna make this up, and I am in Omaha, and, or I am in, uh, let's say, no, I'm in Topeka, um, my call, the follow-up for the CCBHC that follows up after the de-escalation takes place, with the response center, goes to the CCBHC for the originating area, for the number with the originating area code, meaning it goes back to Pawnee, because Pawnee is my CCBHC. But if I am in, let's say, Topeka, or Wichita, or Kansas City, um, I'm out of the catchment area. So now G routing, the beauty of it, it sends the person to the CCBHC of the area, so they can follow up right after more, um, uh, in a more nimble fashion, and a faster fashion, rather than their CCBHC of their area, and they might not be living in that area any longer. Uh, so that is that. Verizon and T-Mobile went live with it, uh, that was back in October, actually, but the, um, we're waiting to hear about AT&amp;T. Texting is another functionality that is underway. Um, but again, a reminder for Pawnee's crisis line, and that is one eight hundred six oh nine twenty oh two. Um, again, CSU operates twenty-four seven. If a person meets the medical necessity criteria, they're screened, and they're found to, or they were deemed to be, um, at the CSU level of care, they get admitted to CSU. Uh, we're here, holidays don't need to be, uh, a sad time for those who can be sad around the holidays. I'm gonna stop here and see if you have any questions.
The only question I have, are you, how, how is your staffing? Are you fully staffed?
Um, we continue to evolve, so I'll tell you, um, for the whole agency, um, we have, so for example, I have approved several positions for CSU, for CSU and, um, crisis services in general. Uh, we're, we are staffed for the needs now, um, but there are pockets, I mean, crisis services need some, but not significant. We're not in a crisis, we're not in a staffing crisis, but staffing continues to be a challenge.
It is for everyone, I know, but I was just curious.
We have, um, been able to retain, to hire and retain the necessary talent as much as possible, um, in the past year. Um, there are programs that are hard to hire for, for example, crisis services can be a little hard to hire for. Um, finding clinical-level therapists, um, is becoming more of a rare, uh, thing at this time. But we continue to work towards that, and we're offering a sign-on bonus, uh, we are paying the best, literally the best rates for mental health professionals, exceeding the market by thousands of dollars, and continues to be a challenge.
Yeah, being hard places, no matter what the pay is.
Yeah.
Do you, um, meet with, uh, state legislators at all that cover your, because we have two new ones in Gary County.
Yes, on my list.
Okay, good.
On my list, I want, I wanna do the, and I want to also, um, invite folks for our ACMHK, um, Association of Community Mental Health Centers Advocacy Day on January sixteen. This year is a little earlier, so I'm gonna do the rounds, I, I wanna, I will be contacting legislators and, and go pay them a visit, you know.
Because they need to understand, because I mean, they're, they're gonna be bombarded with tons of information, but, you know, I mean, they're gonna be making decisions, and they need to be informed on what you do and what the need is. And so, yeah, that's good.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, thank you both.
All righty.
Have a good rest of the day.
All right, you too.
Travis, sorry. Don't be bad. You? Good.
Yeah, Lee?
I know.
I know.
I talked to, um, I think he covers local Betsy and Morris County, a presider.
Yeah.
Can't remember.
Is it Ryan McAlves?
Maybe, I think Ryan, yeah, that's right. It is Ryan, yeah.
He was the KCAA president.
Yeah, he said.
So just.
I'm going back to get my jet. He said, I, we need to get Travis Warren off. I go, he's got two little kids and he's in the reserves.
Yeah, if any one of those changes, we'd be good.
Yeah.
That'll be the reserve thing.
He didn't know you were in there.
Let's put him up for it out. Me and Luke had it out this morning, though. I told him, I was gonna leave you on the side of the road, boy.
He's got a lot of his mom's attitude.
You tell him, Santa is watching.
He has his mom's attitude?
No, I didn't say that on the camera officially, accidentally.
Oh, I think you did say it. And Santa heard it, too.
I gave him a gummy bear on Saturday and he said, oh, Daddy, you've been a good boy. You can be my best friend today. Thanks, Luke. It's great to know. Been a good boy.
Gee, thanks, Luke.
Yeah. It's like a privilege to be his best friend, you know.
It is a privilege.
You get to be my best friend.
It is a privilege.
It's cold in here.
Probably not a jacket. Well, I think there's something wrong with our thermostat. I've made it a thing for yearly maintenance, but I haven't seen it yet.
We should just make a list and this afternoon, just tell Corey, before you leave, one more thing for you to do, one more thing.
He'd count the hours now.
No, better get you. His partner's today, isn't he?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But he's walking out on you.
I'm used to that.
Well, now, some people really don't talk.
Yeah, I know. Especially this time of year. It's alright.
So are you doing ten minutes? Um, I think we got a book for fifteen, that's what we had, but I thought they would. Yeah, ten minutes should be fine. I sent out reminders this morning and all three replied back, but they, I have other calendars, so. I was just letting them know that we probably won't be back till noon. Unless you're gonna get worried.
Sometimes I do.
Well, it's in the works then. Can you go to home?
Yeah, I made a motion.
Tell us to say, is Betsy coming in?
She went down the hall with the police.
She comes in. I'll second that and.